Sarah Savilecik?
Here.
Francine Doncic?
Here.
Michael Flick? Kate Nelson?
Here.
Pat Phillips?
Here.
And Larry Payton did indicate that he would be absent.
Correct.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Pat, if you wouldn't mind leading the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize, before we go any further, I need to read a guideline for those of you on Zoom for tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to call into Zoom, the call number is 1-669-900-9128, and the meeting ID is 871-7700-2315. Any participant wishing to speak via Zoom shall sign into Zoom with their first and last names and identify themselves with the first and last names when they are called upon. If you are a member of the public and you wish to speak, then please only click the raise hand prompt symbol during the public comment portion of the item you wish to speak on. You will only be called upon to speak during the public comment periods. Any panelists on Zoom should mute their mics until they are ready to speak. If anyone is having difficulty hearing the audio through Zoom, it may be helpful to use earbuds. Thank you. If we could have the ethics law announcement, please?
Certainly. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today... Am I not on? Am I on? Can you hear me?
I think so, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll start over. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you have received a gift or loan; number two, you have a pecuniary interest; number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered today. Then you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is considered; and furthermore, you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded, under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, please disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Secretary Lloyd, if we could have the appeal procedure, please?
Of course. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. We are opening now to public comment. I just remind everybody that public comment at this point is three minutes per person. Do we have any public comment either via Zoom or in the chambers?
I do have a hand raised. I have a few hands raised on Zoom. First, we will go to Lisa Durgan. I'm going to allow you to talk. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Lisa, we can hear you.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Lisa, are you able to hear us here in chambers? Okay, I will go ahead. We have Daniel Engler. I'm going to allow you to talk. Daniel, if you could please state your first and last name for the record.
First name, Daniel, last name Engler.
Excellent. You have the floor, sir.
I wasn't sure when I should speak. I'm actually speaking, commenting on the Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA-21-0002, Village Green. We are adjacent property.
All right, Daniel, what I'm going to ask you to do, please, is we're going to have that item opened, and we'll have staff and applicant presentations, and then you'll speak during the public comment of that item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like me to try Lisa again?
Try Lisa one more time, and then we'll...
Sorry about that. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes. Can you hear us in chambers?
I can, yes. I apologize, I had a microphone issue. So, thank you.
Of course. And this is for general public comment?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Excellent. You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Lisa Durgan, and my husband and I own a home in the Bridle Path subdivision. I am currently, I also currently serve as the president of the Bridle Path Homeowners Association. Just wanted to put that information out there. My comments tonight do relate to an aspect of the Village Green plan that's coming up for discussion, the part that involves connecting a public access trail to the private equestrian trail network that is owned and maintained by Bridle Path homeowners. Following the last Planning Commission meeting, I emailed Ms. Olander, Julie Olander, the planner, that I and some other homeowners in Bridle Path were alarmed by the element in the Village Green plans that referred to Bridle Path common areas and equestrian trails as public. Ms. Olander replied to me by email, and I subsequently had a conversation with our county commissioner, Von Hartung, and these conversations brought to light the fact that the county has not been able to locate any recorded documents that show these Bridle Path common areas as private to Bridle Path Homeowners Association members. However, this is contrary to what everyone that has purchased a home in Bridle Path was told when they were purchasing in the development, and also conflicts with numerous documents and maps that are in the possession of the Bridle Path HOA board members and homeowners of Bridle Path. The HOA board and the board's attorney are currently researching through our own documents, as well as other records that we have access to in an effort to find documentation that would confirm our assertion that the Bridle Path HOA common areas are private property. This research was started following that July 6th Finding Commission meeting, which was when we first learned of this discrepancy. What I would like to ask is that the Planning Commission take no vote on the issue of relocating the public easement trail at this time, so that we can complete our research and find the necessary clarifying documentation. Approving a public trail with the intent of connecting it to the Bridle Path equestrian trail network is an action that would potentially need to be undone, depending on the outcome of our own research. Considering the fact that for the past 30 years, Bridle Path homeowners have been under the impression from the developer, our HOA governing documents, Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and other officials that we've consulted over the years on various questions, that the equestrian trails maintained by the Bridle Path HOA are the private property of Bridle Path homeowners, you can imagine that this element of the Village Green development plan has come as a great surprise to our 360 homeowners. Again, we ask that you please defer any decision as to the relocation of the public trail easement portion of the Village Green development plan at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Jen?
Item, that you make allowance for the other person who spoke earlier to also speak during the general public comment on whatever they would like to address.
All right. Thank you. Is there any, are there any more public comment? Is there any more public comment under Zoom?
Daniel, if you wished to take advantage of speaking during this public comment period, please raise your hand again. If not, then we will proceed. Okay. I have no further public comment via Zoom.
Is there any public comment within the chambers?
We have no public comment.
All right. Thank you, seeing no public comment. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion?
Chair Doncic?
Mr. Chesney, I move to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Chesney, seconded by Commissioner Svilcek. Are there any questions or issues with the agenda? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is the approval of the July 6, 2021 draft minutes. Entertain a motion for approval?
Commissioner Chesney moved to approve the minutes of the July 6 meeting.
Commissioner Flick moved to approve. Commissioner Chesney actually seconded. Are there any questions or changes to be made to the minutes? Seeing none, I'll move for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We are now officially going into public hearings. First item is Master Plan Amendment Case WMPA-21-0002, Village Green. Secretary Lloyd, if you could read forth, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Trevor Lloyd. This item was continued from last month's meeting. It is Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA-21-0002, Village Green, for hearing discussion and possible action to amend the Washoe County Plan, Spanish Springs Area Plan, Appendix D, Village Green Commerce Center specific plan, and if approved, to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Any approval would be subject to further approval by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners in a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. If approved, the amendment would add clarifying language and include the following 12 bullets that can be found on pages three and four of your agenda. Representing this matter tonight is Staff Planner Julie Olander.
Thank you very much. I have to step in. I missed one point. I apologize. I need to ask if there are any disclosures for tonight? All right. Thank you, seeing no disclosure. Julie? Good evening.
Just waiting for my slide.
I apologize. One moment. I should just... Just screen one, if you could. Okay.
This is the applicants.
Oh. I apologize, Julie. There we go.
Good evening, Julie Olander, for the record. This is a Master Plan Amendment for the Village Green Commerce Center specific plan. It's not engaging. Oops, there we go. Okay. And the Village Green Commerce Center is part of the Spanish Springs Area Plan. The request that's before you is primarily for one parcel. 534, 561, 10. There we go. And this shows a map where you can see the primary parcel. And then the smaller one, ends in 08, is also part of the specific plan. And then the two parcels that say open space, they are also part of the specific plan. The applicant is requesting to change several things throughout the plan, but like I said, primarily for the one parcel, for parcel 10. They're asking to remove that parcel from being required to... Any of the requirements in the Spanish Springs Area Plan, Appendix A, including building coverage. They're also proposing some language changes, the height and setbacks. Under the architectural changes, they're asking to change the industrial theme to architectural and design. And then they're also asking to add evergreen trees as an option for buildings that have more than 50 feet in length. They're also being asked to be exempted from several things under the architectural requirements. And I'm not going to read them all off there, but there's quite a few. And then there's also, they're asking for clarification on illuminated signs, also on the location of loading docks, that they are not going to be located adjacent to residential property. And then again, they're asking for exemption from some other standards, little impact development standards, environmental sustainability standards. Staff is also asked, reviewing this plan, has asked for some changes. We're asking to change Goal 2 to be called created commerce. And then Goal 5, we're asking that to be changed. Some of the language is going to be removed from that since Goal 5... Excuse me. We're asking to remove Goal 5 since most, everything in Goal 5 has been already completed. And then under affluent water, we're asking to add the language where, when available, because currently affluent water is not available in the area. And then some other things under the landscape, the streetscape section, we're asking for some zero scape options. We're asking to change the name of the equestrian path to public trail easement. And then we're changing the location of that also, which I will show in a map in just a minute. And then we're also adding some language to the transportation improvement section, which I also, so I'll show you some new language on that, too. Just to give you some background, the Village Green Commerce Center was developed specifically for a specific developer that had specific industrial ideas in place. That never occurred. And so now someone else is coming in to make some changes. And as I said, there's four parcels involved, and I should have pointed those out. Two of them are included as Washoe County's to be used as sediment basins. And we did try to contact the one parcel owner and the 08 parcel. He is not, that person has not responded. So, this changes that we're asking for, the applicant is asking for, will allow them to have more flexibility in developing the property, and then we'll bring it up to some of the current industrial standards that are now available and now being done. So again, I just want to recap. The main changes are to remove it from the Spanish Springs Area Plan for the one parcel. And then, and I apologize, I dropped the last two digits, 010. Apologize for that. Also, they're going to allow parking areas to be, and driveways to be facing residential, but the loading docks will not. They're changing the building height and signage and lighting requirements. And then we're adding some language for transportation on Calida La Plata, and then the equestrian easement. Here's a map to show that equestrian easement. So currently in the plan, the equestrian easement basically goes down along where the dotted lines are and the yellow outline is. So it goes along from Calida La Plata down the eastern boundary of the plan, and then down along the southern boundary of the plan. And the southern boundary is where Bridle Path is located. So the easement has always been there since this plan was developed. So there's always been an equestrian easement along there. We're proposing to change that location to be going north, just north-south in the development. And I know this concern about accessing the equestrian easement in Bridle Path, but it is just in, on the property of 110. It's not, you know, it has the possibility of going into the Bridle Path that they want, if they chose to come in from Bridle Path onto the easement. But it is just on, within the plan area, and primarily on just the one parcel. However, the plan is also giving the option, if 08 comes into play, if it comes into the plan and decides to make some changes, we could move the path over to be along the sediment basin. And that would give a better alignment for the path that's going to be across Calida La Plata for the Sugarloaf development. So the thought behind realigning this path really comes to allowing these properties, including the Bridle Path people, if they choose to be a part of this, to go from Bridle Path or from Village Green across Calida La Plata, through Sugarloaf, through Blackstone, to the Sugarloaf Peak open space. And this is something that we are trying to do more connectivity, so people can get from one development to another, either by a path instead of getting in their car. So it's, there's a potential that someone might work at this, at this location and be able to get on their bike or walk from Sugarloaf or Blackstone to their place of work. And so that's why we're leaving, we've, you know, we want to leave the path in there. And we're renaming it to a public path instead of equestrian. So it changes it a bit. It's not going to be allowed. You can't use motorized vehicles on it, but you can walk it, you can bike ride it, and you can ride a horse on it. So I do want to clear that up. There seems to be some concern. So, and there is confusion about the paths in Bridle Path, if they're private or public. But that's a different conversation in a sense. This path that we're proposing is only within the Village Green Commerce Center. We are also proposing some new language. And this is where we got stuck last month on the transportation improvement language. And we worked with the applicant and the engineering department to come up with this new language. So that basically, when this area is developed within the Village Green, they will have to, through the building permit process, have to come up with an agreement that would be to the satisfaction of the country, of the county engineer, that the improvements that they're proposing on Calida La Plata will meet the needs of the development. So this is the language that we are now proposing. This was noticed to 51 parcels, and I want to make a clarification. It was noticed at the RJG, RGGJ on July 23rd. I put in your staff report the 25th, and that would not meet the noticing requirement. But it was noticed on the 23rd. There was a meeting held on June 16th, and I think this we covered at the last meeting also. And the people that were at the meeting had various questions about the lighting, the flooding, about the path location, the connection to the north-south. And then other people thought it was a good plan. Application was reviewed by various departments. We received no recommendations for denial. And staff believes it does meet all the findings, which are listed in your staff report. And here is a possible motion. I know the applicant is available online and on Zoom and has a presentation.
Thank you, Julie, very much. Are there any questions from the commissioners at this time? Or would you like to hear from the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Flick.
So the Bridle Path on the parcel that we're proposing to put it on versus where it was located previously, will be owned by the property owner of that parcel, which is 34, 534... Look at the number.
So is it part of the...
10. So it's not part of Bridle Path. This, this development is adjacent to Bridle Path. So the woman that spoke earlier, she is in the subdivision that's south of this development. So their paths are another separate situation. They're another, in another development. So the path that we're proposing to relocate is in the Village Green.
Does the county own it?
No, it'll be owned by the property owner. It is easement only.
Well, I mean to...
Yeah. So the property owner, it's a part of their property, yeah. It's just an easement.
So the, so the trail system today, as it relates to this project, is owned by the individual property owner?
If I may.
Versus the public lands?
Right. It's not, it's not public. It's not owned by the county. It's, it's part of, it's like a part of that parcel. So...
It's owned by the homeowners association. That's what I was saying.
Well, are we talking about the Bridle Path, the Bridle Path people? That's, those are also easements on individual properties. So there's, in the Bridle Path development subdivision, there is equestrian paths through individual people's properties and through their common areas. But those are south of this development. So any, the path that we're looking at in Village Green will be owned by the property owner of the parcel in Village Green.
So, so say part of the trail system is owned and feebed by the property owner, and the other is, the other part is that the underlying ownership has issued an easement to cross the property. Are you saying that?
Yeah, I guess you could call it an easement. Yeah.
So it's a combination of both?
But in the Bridle Path, there is confusion within that subdivision if they are considered private or public. But that's not an item that's before you in a sense. And we're not proposing to link this path to Bridle Path. It abuts the Bridle Path subdivision, but there's nothing that, we're not going to post it that you can continue on Bridle Path until that gets resolved. But this is a master plan, I mean, a specific plan, that we had a path there previously, and the path there previously bordered the whole, a lot more of Bridle Path than this path does now.
What uses, can be used for the Bridle Path now? Any other use or just, just equestrian?
I don't, I'm not that familiar. I believe it's primarily equestrian and walking. I don't know really how many horses are still in Bridle Path area. I'm sure there's some, but I'm not sure their paths, I think, are also used for walking.
So what would be allowed under the change in name?
In the, in the Village Green, the path that we're proposing to realign, it would be allowed for everything but motorized vehicles.
Julie, if I may, but that, but that is only for this property. It has nothing to do with Bridle Path.
Correct.
Which is why that is something...
So the owners requesting this...
This is through the owners and what the county have agreed upon for this one piece of property only.
Yeah.
Has nothing to do with Bridle Path.
They need to be separated. They're two different property owners. The Bridle Path has several property owners, and that's a separate conversation in a sense.
Okay. If I, same line, not with the equestrian trail, but it seems to me that the county is giving up quite a lot by making this change. I mean, we're, the wise people have, you know, created the existing specific plan to cover all the environmental and architectural, public improvements. And now, as you read this, you know, that parcel, parcel 10, is going to be exempt from all of that.
Correct.
Including a grading. I mean, why are we doing this?
Including a what? I'm sorry, I didn't miss, I did not...
Why are we doing this?
Because the applicant, the property owner has asked us to make the changes. So the property owner has approached us and applied for a master plan amendment to change the green, Village Green specific plan. And they have that ability to do it because they're representing the property owners. And they've asked for these changes. From the county's, from staff perspective, the changes they're asking, some of the changes we already have in the building code. Some of the things that they're asking for would be in the building code. But a lot of the architectural requirements don't really meet industrial standards anymore, the western theme.
Do we know what, has he submitted elevations on what this is going to look like?
No. No. This is just a master plan amendment, so that's...
We don't cover that at this point. Sorry, Julie.
That's okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Doncic. Ms. Olander, the question that I have is that when staff put this report together, did they reference, did you reference, or any other planning staff reference that the Bridle Path common areas and equestrian trails are public?
Yes, they were. That was done by the park planner. At that time, because how they were written on the map and the location that we're talking about, it doesn't call them out as private or public. If you go through Bridle Path, they have probably, I don't know, maybe 10 or 20 maps, because they came in at different times. And with those different maps, some of them say private and some say public. But the, where this, this, the easement that we're proposing, the public trail easement that we're proposing, the Bridle Path property that is adjacent to it, does not state it's public or private. So typically, they're public. So most private, most trails, easements through the, like these, this type are considered, are typically private, public. So it was assumed that they were, they were public. However, the HOA made note that they didn't feel like they were. However, as the first public comment speaker explained, they are still not sure what they are. And it's been assumed by the HOA that they were private. But we do not have enough documentation to show that to be the case. So the park planner that wrote the letter, the comment... So the park planner that wrote the letter, the comment about trying to link up with Bridle Path, as she's trying to commit, you know, create connectivity with the different parks, I mean, different trails, she made that understand she because it doesn't say it on the map, she made the assumption that it was public, which it might be.
But has she amended her letter to state that public or private access is still being reviewed?
Well, because of where the it it doesn't doesn't come into play per se in this situation.
Well, I I'm sorry. It would if there's if we're trying to produce connectivity.
Right. So at this point, we are in limbo on that connectivity. So at this point, the path does not, we have the understanding the path is not going to link up with Bridle Path until Bridle Path equestrian easements, until that is resolved.
Okay.
However, the property owner is willing to put the path on his property, have it stop at Bridle Path, not make any connection at this point. So they understand the concern and the issue. And so at this point, all we're asking is that basically a line be drawn on the on the plan.
On the existing property? I mean, solely on the property owner's property?
On the one property, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Phillips.
I have a question. Probably it would be procedural. Is there any way from what I hear from the concerns, since this is there is a part of the Bridle Path public path questions, is there any way we can separate that from the rest of the plan and not vote on that part of that that is before us?
Secretary Lloyd.
That's a bit of a challenging question, and I'm going to look over at my attorney here. I do believe that the Planning Commission has the purview, however, of approving the entire document as it's been proposed or approving portions of it. You certainly have that purview. That is my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm looking at my my legal for some legal advice here.
That's correct. The the board can approve part of the plan that's in front of you. The issue is if you were to try to make changes that aren't currently in front of you, that's a that's a no-no. So that's where we draw the line with that. However, of course, I just caution, if you only approve part of it, then if that were to be added in future, you would need another master plan amendment and so on and so forth.
Any more questions from the?
Chair Doncic.
Yes.
So I'm just.
Commissioner Sevillec.
I'm just asking for very specific clarification so that that the entire this board understands, the audience understands, that with this master plan amendment, this access this access trail is solely located on the property owner's property, and there's no connectivity to any other path, trail, or system at all at this point.
Yes, at this point, it's basically a dead end. It's sort of like it's there and it abuts the other parcel. But if they, I mean, there's nothing at this point. I mean, I've had conversations with Bridle Path that they would like to put a fence up, you know, that would be an option for them. However, because it's an unknown still for Bridle Path, I don't think they're willing to commit to that kind of barrier there. So at this time, I think it's safe to put the path in, and then if and when they can come to conclusion about what the paths are in Bridle Path, then they can decide if they need to do fencing along there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Chair Doncic, this is Commissioner Nelson. I have a question for Julie.
Go ahead, Commissioner Nelson.
Julie, have you spoken with the owner about this? If there's not going to be connectivity to the Bridle Path to the south, do they want that pass on their property?
This is Julie Olander. For the record, I apologize, I haven't been introducing myself. But so the reason we're leaving the path in there is because it was in there originally. So the path was originally in there along the eastern boundary of the of the of the specific plan, and then along the southern boundary. The property owner is not opposed to having it removed. However, it was there originally, and so I wanted to, you know, honor that. And then also recognize that there might be people that work in this facility that might be living adjacent to it. And so we want to provide some kind of ability for people that work there to be able to walk or ride their bike or their horse. And so that's the reason we left it in there. It was only because, from my perspective, as staff, I felt like I wanted to maintain some kind of ease trail there, and that's the reason we relocated it, though, because it didn't make sense where the trail was located previously. It didn't connect with anything. At this point, if we leave it where it is, it'll connect across the street to Sugarloaf and then on to Blackstone and then on to if people were going to walk that far, on to the Sugarloaf Peak open space.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the commissioners? If not, I'd like the presentation from the applicant. Thank you very much, Julie.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carrie Rohrmeier, for the record. I'm here tonight on behalf of SJS Commercial Real Estate, Mark Siegel. He's on the presenter list as well. We're just going to add on to some of the content you've already heard previously. Julie did an excellent job, and we've had a really good collaboration and cooperation with working with Washoe County over the last nine months that it took us to get to this point. So I really want to thank staff for all their hard work, both planning and engineering. So just to give you a little more background, you know, the Western theme that was in the current it was in the original Village Green specific plan is not it was designed specifically for a project that never came to fruition. It is not reflective of where the Washoe County Code for Industrial Development is today, nor is it reflective of the kind of modern industrial construction that is appropriate for our communities. So we're here, we initiated this master plan amendment, not because warehouse isn't allowed, it actually is allowed. And in 2019, a master plan amendment came before you for this very specific plan, too, to sort of clean things up. But it didn't go quite far enough. Here we are looking for clarification. So really, some technical information that was included in that Spanish Springs area plan, Appendix A, that is subject to Appendix D. So really, kind of a technical cleanup, but really clarification. But at the heart of this, industrial zoning is in place, the use is in place, and that is what this development one day hopes to do at this site, you know, bring a really fine project. We, like I said, followed the master plan process. We've had a neighborhood meeting. We were at Planning Commission a month ago. There was some discussion that needed more more discussion and some clarification prior to coming to you today. But ultimately, what this master plan amendment hopes to do is relinquish parcel 10 from some of the Appendix A Western Design Theme Guidelines, and specifically, things like building coverage limitation that was 30% or less. I think the intent was the last master plan amendment, you make that happen, but some of the texting just didn't get into the code update. We also made clarifications regarding access, where doors could be positioned, certainly fire access doors, front entrance doors could be located or positioned where they were facing residential. But by no means are we planning to put truck docks. In fact, we made that very clear, truck docks were to be positioned away from neighboring parcels. There was a clarification about a 20% versus 15% landscaping. In the previous master plan amendment, 15% was approved. The actual text just didn't make it into this version. We wanted to clarify some of the design standards to be more reflective of the current Washoe County Code, and then also some of the things a question came up about are, you know, what is the county giving up? And the reality is, it's not giving up much of anything. These are in some ways like lighting, more stringent standards that we are self-enforcing and mitigating, but also being in line with where industrial development is today. And then one thing that has happened in the last four weeks since we've been before you is that the developer has been working very closely with Washoe County engineering staff specifically, and they are working towards a memorandum of understanding regarding the improvements needed for Cali de la Plata to serve this project adequately and sufficiently. And so that was one of the major reasons that we took the extra time extension and worked with the county. Now, I'd like to invite Mark to co-present. I know he wanted to touch on the trail easement, the public trail easement, because public comment has come up. Mark, did you want to add some content?
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Plan Commission members. Mark Siegel, SJS Commercial Real Estate. I thank you for your consideration and the time to speak. Couple of quick things that have just come up here that I'd like to touch on. First of all, we want to thank both planning and engineering staff that we've been working very closely with, particularly since the last Plan Commission hearing. And I think we've come a long way in working on a lot of the details. One thing I just want to repeat and emphasize that both Carrie and Julie have pointed out is that this is more technical, and we're updating, providing consistency with the last master plan amendment, providing further clarification, as well as a couple of corrections. In the last master plan amendment, the Western theme, which, as Julie pointed out, was very specific for a very specific project with a specific developer, was replaced with contemporary industrial standards. And it's along that basis that we are asking for the specific clarifications and corrections to provide consistency with that contemporary industrial standard that was previously approved by the Plan Commission, together with the removal of the sustainability standards that are now embodied, as both Carrie and Julie have pointed out, within the current county code. Specifically, as to this equestrian and private or and public versus private easement, let me first say this specifically to Lisa Durgan and her homeowners that she represents, as well as to the Plan Commission. You know, we fully understand and respect private property rights. So, you know, as Julie pointed out, this is a separate easement that was previously required on the southern portion of our private property. It's in addition to the existing equestrian easement. As to whether or not it's public or private, I cannot speak to that whatsoever. But again, we understand and respect it. We hope that the Plan Commission would, you know, separate that issue, which, you know, we would fully fully respect whatever the ultimate decision is by the appropriate people within the HOA and the county from this specific master plan amendment request that you have in front of you this evening. So that's what I want to speak to as to the Bridle Path and the pedestrian path that we're looking to include in here, as it was included previously, as well as, you know, at the request of the Parks Department. But we're here to work with staff and the Plan Commission, as well as the adjoining property owners, and whatever's best in that regard. One last, some minor item I just want to point out on page seven of the staff report under reviewing agencies and engineering. It specifically refers to curb and gutter and sidewalks on both sides of Cali de la Plata. As both Julie and Carrie have pointed out, we are working diligently with staff, and some of those may be modified, and ultimately will be decided by staff and agreed to by us. But I just want to point that one minor thing out. With that, I thank you for your consideration. We look forward to being good neighbors and to providing a quality development that we can all be proud of in the community. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Chesney, to the chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Chesney.
To the applicant. I had concerns that originally, like I say, I don't have a dog in this hunt, but I felt that the proposals by engineering were unreasonable at the last meeting, and that's one of the big reasons that this thing was postponed. And I want to make sure that you feel comfortable, that you're not going to get strong-armed down the line here, putting curb curb and gutter on somebody else's at somebody else's benefit. And that would be to Mr. Siegel.
Commissioner Chesney, first of all, I thank you for that concern. We had expressed a similar concern with staff. We are we're hopeful specifically as to that item, that there will be other developments that will be proceeding ahead of us, and they will, in fact, be taking care of that prior to our coming on board with our construction. And we're working diligently, and I think in very good faith, both staff and they with us, in very good faith, in trying to accomplish the overall goal for this corridor for the community. And they understand the concern that you have is what we've, you know, we expressed prior to last month's hearing. And, you know, we echo that, and I think that the staff does understand that, and I think that they're working in very good faith. And hopefully, we will be coordinating with the neighboring property owners in that regard. But you are correct. I mean, we and we're we haven't gotten to that level of detail. We are working towards an MOU. We have a pretty lengthy outline of one right now and hope to have it within, I don't want to definitively speak, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be within the next month prior to the county board hearing. And hopefully, by that time, we can get that out. But you are correct, we can't commit to take to obtaining properties, especially right aways from other property owners, and also, you know, we can't bear that burden for their benefit. So did that answer your question?
Yes, it certainly does. Thank you very much. I have one one more question, I think, for Julie. I I don't see it. I don't see it in the in this proposal, but I want the access to the adjoining residential properties. I I want some assurances in here before I can support this thing, that the county parks or county planning is not going to come back and say all of a sudden, tell Bridle Path, well, oh, yeah, these are these are public easements, we're going to open this thing up. This, I've been around, this is my this is not my first rodeo, and I'm telling you, you know, that a path from Sugarloaf Mountain through the other developments to and then where does it end? Does it end up down at down at Save Mart in downtown Spanish Springs at the expense of the homeowners that in good faith bought into Bridle Path? And I know that they are two separate issues, but I think they need to be clarified. And I don't know if we can do that on this vote, but I'm very concerned about preserving the intent of the property rights from those people purchased in Bridle Path. And so my question is, how do we ensure that somewhere down the line, county parks doesn't come along and and say, oh, well, you know, we had this map come in, it was not public, and we had this map come in later on, and it was public, and so on and so forth. And then, you know, everybody starts digging their heels in, and we have a we have a fight on our hands that we don't deserve, and neither do the homeowners.
This is Julie Olander with Planning and Building, for the record. I, Commissioner, I think that the challenge we have here is we have an unknown in Bridle Path. And I I think that to hold back on, I mean, to to stop the process because of that unknown, which could be go on for quite a period of time until I do believe it'll become a legal issue, and it'll probably have to go to the courts, because I don't think we have the documentation deciphering if it's private or public at this time. That's what I that's my understanding. So all we're asking for, and Parks was asking for, is to give a path in the Village Green as there was previously a path in the Village Green. If you want to go back to the old path, the way it is originally currently in the Village Green along the whole southern portion of Bridle Path and then along this eastern sea eastern boundary, that's a possibility. This path has a better alignment. You know, the the question we have is, is that Bridle Path going to be deciphered, decided to be public? And then if it's not, they can put they can we can it can be fenced so that there's no way for them to get, you know, anybody to get into Bridle Path, that they're deemed to be private. I just I I don't think I can really totally answer your question. I just, I don't think I can really totally answer your question. I don't know if legal counsel has a comment on this. They, I think that it's just an unknown situation, and it's an unfortunate situation for the bridle path people, because I think they've been under the understanding that those paths are private. So I think it's more of a bridle path issue at this time than the Village Green issue. The path that they're going to put, propose to put along that one boundary, I don't think is going to be, I mean, ultimately, I think if it's, it is used by the Village Green, anybody working in Village Green, they will have to go only, they'll go south, I mean, north, excuse me, they won't go south. I mean, it's possible someone in Village, in the bridle path people might work in this, in this development, and then that would become a bit of a challenge. I don't know how they would feel about crossing that, that line. But I think at this point, we just need to move forward with the path that is aligned the way it is, because it does make more sense than the alignment that is in the, in the plan currently.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Any more questions from the commission? If not, then I-
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Chair.
So, thank you. So I guess this is to counsel or to Mr. Lloyd. If this proposed trail is completely on the Village of the Green property, and we keep calling it Village of the Green, but it isn't that anymore, but, and it's completely on that property, and it has no connectivity to any other trail system, equestrian system, or anything in, adjacent to this area, and, and it's being, as Ms. Olander stated, they're leaving it in there because it was in the original plan. So if it, if it isn't, if it's solely on the property that is owned by the developer, is, is this within our purview?
And through the chair, thank you, Madam Commissioner. Yes, it is within your purview, as this document has come before you, and they're asking to make a change to that location. So certainly, you have that purview to either approve as is, or you have the authority to, to make certain changes. If you don't feel that that's an appropriate change, you, it's within your purview to, to not make that change.
Okay. Okay, so, is there any other reason that this trail is left in this plan beyond because it was there originally? What is the purpose of this?
This is Julie Olander with Planning and Building. So the purpose was to provide connectivity. And as you said, it was originally believed that the bridle path people, that was a public access. So at this point, you mean, it's possible we could cut the path off, we could remove the path. I mean, bridle path does not want to be connected, obviously, to any other paths, they want to be totally within themselves. The only concern I have as a planner is that if we find that they are public, and in 10 years from now, 20 years from now, people move in and say, well, why can't we connect to the paths that go through Sugarloaf and Blackstone? And as a dequestrian person, I have horses, you know, I can see myself being in bridle path, saying, I have to go out onto Pyramid and around and up, I can't get through Village Green, because there's no path through there. So I think it's thinking beyond, you know, today, and with the possibility that they are public, the possibility that people in bridle path might want to connect to some paths that go beyond their subdivision. But if that is not the will of the commission, then you could just remove the path totally from the plan. I know that the property owner, he was not opposed to doing that when we've chatted in the past, so you could do that. However, I just want to think about, you know, five, 10 years down, and also maybe for people that are in the bridle path area that would like to ride their horses or walk to Sugarloaf Peak, open space. Right now, if the path is removed, they will not have that ability. They'll have to go out into Pyramid. And if that's what they want to do, that's fine, and that's, but I think it's not only the current residents that we have to look at, but the future residents also. And what Parks is trying to do is provide more techni, techni, I can't even say the word anymore, connection to open spaces. That's one of their goals. And that's what we try to do within the Planning Department, too. We want to create connections to other spaces, not only open spaces, but connection to residential commercial areas. We want to have people have the ability to walk, not only get in their cars, but to walk, or ride a bike, or ride a horse.
I understand that, and I respect that and appreciate that, but again, this trail, this, whatever we're calling this, this access trail is solely on-
Village Green.
Village Green.
It's totally on theirs.
Totally on theirs, and it deadends-
At this point, it deadends into bridle path.
And it's right on the edge of the property.
It deadends into-
But it's directly on the edge of the property boundary.
Yes, it deadends. It's sort of like, this is the end of the property, it ends right here, and on the other side is bridle path. That's, yeah, it's, it's off the podium.
Okay.
Chair, if I could also respond, because I believe the question came up through Commissioner Chavilla-Czek. Why is that trail there? Why was that? It was originally a concession, an amenity offered by the original, the original developers, the ones that originally came forward with the Village Green initially, to accommodate any additional pedestrian or equestrian traffic through their property. Because I guess at the time, there was some suggestions from some, some of the residents that they wanted connection to Calle de la Plata. Again, this is from memory, there may have been folks opposed to it, but there was certainly folks within the bridle path community that were supportive of the trail.
And this is Julie Olander with Planning and Building. Just to add on to that, in the Village Green plan itself, one of the parts of the Western theme that we are not moving forward with on this, on parcels, parcel 10, they have hitching post requirements. So you have to have hitching posts. So parcel 10 will no longer have the requirement having a hitching post, parcel eight will. So there was a real Western horse-oriented theme out there, and so they wanted that equestrian path along there. And, and I also want to make comment that, at that time, there was, I mean, I, Planning Manager Lloyd might have a better remembrance of this, but I have not found any discussion that there was an issue with the bridle path subdivision, and I could be wrong on that. But, but also, it was approved with that bridle path all the way along that southern border, which is a lot longer than what we're proposing today.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the commissioners? If not, is there any public comment?
I do have a few hands raised via Zoom. I have Daniel Engler, who spoke up earlier. I'm going to allow Daniel to talk. And if you could, when you're ready, just state your first and last name for the record.
Daniel Engler.
And the floor is yours, Daniel.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. Thanks for allowing me to speak. A couple of things, I'm on parcel 11, which is the upper north parcel adjoining to the east, the immediate east, so we share a 10-acre property line down there. I want to go on record once again, I've been following this for over two years to most of the meetings, and we were offered an easement on to the developer's property in the event that we have a flood, which we've had three now, which was Washoe Dutter Bridge, and we're working through that. But again, going on record, I've met and had multiple discussions with the previous developer, and now Mark. I think that the plan they've got put forth has all of the areas of concern covered. I'm happy that it's a responsible project, and I think Mark will do his, his best to keep that moving forward. I don't agree with that equestrian easement, or, or trail easement, or public easement through the property. I don't think that the builder should have to bear that when bridle path is adamant. I've been on here long enough to know that bridle path does not allow anybody outside of that subdivision in or out of their property, they just don't allow it. So if you work in the development and you want to go to Sugarloaf, you can walk across the paved parking lot out to Calle de la Plata and catch the other easements that are through the other properties and get there. Likewise, coming back in, you've got the whole industrial park that's going to be paved that they can get to and from work. If there's no access to bridle path, I do not think that that is a viable asking of the developer to spend that time and money to have a go-nowhere trail. So, again, commissioners, thank you for your time, and I will follow this as we move
I apologize. Thank you, Daniel. I also have Lisa Durgan, who I am going to allow to speak. And if you could state your first and last name for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. This is Lisa Durgan again. I just wanted to add to my earlier comments in light of the discussion that's taken place. The connectivity concerns of the bridle path homeowners that, that we have spoken to and that we've heard comments from are not concerns about bridle path homeowners getting out of the neighborhood to the north to access trails. It is the traffic going the other direction, which I mentioned in my original email to Ms. Olander, that we have an ongoing problem in the development with motorized vehicles accessing the bridle paths, causing accidents with people that are on horses, causing injuries. And I understand that this public access trail is not designated for motorized traffic, but as we have seen time and time again, that doesn't stop people from doing it, and there's very little that can be done to enforce it. Washoe County Sheriff's Department just doesn't have the resources to enforce it. So our concern is, you know, the number one expense of bridle path homeowners is the maintenance of this trail network and the retention ponds and drainage system that runs throughout it, and we've sustained a lot of damage due to this illegal access with motorized vehicles and so forth. So that's really, that's probably the, you know, the biggest root of the concern, and it's not, you know, we have plenty of people that walk on the trails from all over, and nobody, nobody has an issue with that, really. It's the unauthorized motorized vehicle traffic that manages to make its way through and damages our retention ponds and berms and those types of things. And I also wanted to mention, unfortunately, the people that were involved in the early meetings with the original developer are either no longer living in the neighborhood or no longer available to speak. But the original developer, in conversations with the HOA board members at the time, agreed that he would build a fence along the perimeter to protect access to the bridle path, or to block access to the bridle path trail. So this is not a new concern, it was discussed with the original developer back then. And unfortunately, I don't have any documentation of that meeting, as Ms. Olander probably doesn't either, but that is what was discussed. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak again.
Thank you, Lisa. I do not have any further hands raised via Zoom.
Is there any public comment in chambers?
Yes, I have James Huston, followed by Ken Thies.
Good evening. My name's Jim Huston. I live at 10 Sunlight Court in the bridle path community. Unfortunately, I don't Zoom, so I wasn't able to attend the neighborhood meeting and express any of my concerns, so this is my next best option to voice my concerns. I've worked with Julie to some extent, she's been very helpful, providing information as I do my research. And I'm one of the 36 homes that's within 750 feet of the Village Green. the amendment's asking for 12 separate things here this time around. It's my understanding that in October of 2019, they were, had a whole nother list of things that they got pushed through. Why they have so many this time, and they're just referring to it as cleanup, I don't know. It's almost more like it's death by a thousand cuts, if you want to get this across. Last time, it appeared to me that they were given a concession on building height to allow their new buildings to be 40 feet tall versus 35 feet tall, and that that's passed through. The item number two, where they want to be exempt from the Spanish Springs area plan, including the site coverage requirements. This allows them to build a very large building. The 30% is much fairer to the residents that are 135 feet away. If you had an opportunity to look through the report to page 101, there's a conceptual campus plan, apparently, that they want, what they want to build. It's a very, very large trucking facility, that it should be out by the highway, not 12 miles through town on Pyramid Highway with all these big vehicles. But to allow it to be greater than 30% is a big giveaway of the Spanish Spring area plan. That's not the Village Green plan that they're saying is that they need to update. This is the Spanish Springs plan. And as a resident who needs to travel on Pyramid Highway, I'd sure like to do it without the benefit of all those trucks. And if the project can be a viable project at 30%, that's wonderful. They're well within their rights to do that. But enlarge this thing and allow it to be larger is very problematic. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to speak and say that not everybody within the neighboring community is real pleased with some of the things that are in this new round. Okay, so thank you for your time. I can also add that there's a-
Sir, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up. I apologize, but your three minutes are up, sir.
Oh, okay.
Next, we have Ken Thies.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Ken Thies, 177 Actonness Court. I live north of this property, about 1,000 feet away. Why, I don't know when we went to 750 feet, or if it's been that, I thought it was 1,000 feet, but either way. I am totally against this public access BS. There's a path behind my house right now that's a foot trail, it's a foot trail, my you-know-what. There is side-by-sides racing up and down that path to Sugarloaf daily. Sheriffs can never get out there to catch them and stop it. To put a path from this development, bridle path, through Blackstone, I will fight Blackstone tooth and nail if there's a path to put through there to connect to Sugarloaf. All you're doing is creating a freeway for dirt bikes, ATVs, and side-by-sides. That's not what we're out there for. The other question I have is, where is water coming from for this development? There was a comment in there, and I don't know the verbiage, but it sounded like there's no city water, so where are they going to get water?
We're not, we can't answer questions at this point. It's, they're going to connect to Tamwa.
Well, according to the description in there, it doesn't sound like there is-
Well, no, you were talking about the affluent water.
Correct.
Which is if there's affluent, they want to use that versus-
Affluent meaning, meaning what? That's my question. What does affluent mean?
I'm sorry, Mr. Thies, it's not a back and forth right now, you have three minutes to provide testimony.
All right.
We have no further public comment in chambers.
Seeing no, hearing no further comment, I will close the public hearing.
Chair Doncic?
Oh, yes.
I apologize, we do have another hand raised via Zoom.
All right, thank you.
Mike Wallace, I'm going to allow you to speak. And if you could unmute and state your first and last name for the record, please.
My name is Mike Wallace. I live at 45 Moonbeam Court. I am one of the closest houses that'll be affected by this development. I've been here 25 years. Regarding the bridle path, it has been determined many years ago through Washoe County- Regarding the Bridle Path, it has been determined many years ago through Washoe County and Parks and Recreation that this is private property. It is not public access. We've been down that route with the county and parks, and basically, the county has no jurisdiction on this private property. It's actually an easement on my parcel, the part that's behind my house, that we maintain. Bridle Path HOA maintains it, ensures it, and is supposed to, is secure it. If this path on Village Green property is allowed to go through, we're going to have parallel paths, one public, one private, 10 feet apart, or whatever the distance would be. There's no security for the Bridle Path homeowners. Anybody walking on the public path can step over onto the private path. Now we have liability issue for the HOA because this is not public land, and this is going to be a problem. So I would recommend that they just eliminate the path on Village Green property. That way, we don't have to deal with this dual pathways. And we do have a problem with recreational vehicles and bicycles on the Bridle Path, and that's only going to exacerbate the situation. and the other issue is that if it's, path does go through, the developer's going to have to do something for security to separate these two pieces of property. Otherwise, we're going to have security issues here in the back of our homes. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Chair Doncic, I would also just like to acknowledge on the record that we did receive two emails, one from Lisa Durgan and one from Deanne Endimano. Those were emailed to the Commissioners prior to the meeting. They were posted on the Washoe County website, and they are at your, at the dais for your review.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Is there any more public comment at this time?
We do not have any further
Seeing no public comment, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussions. Any comments or questions further from the Commission at this time?
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
I would like to propose a motion.
Well, seeing no further discussion, Chair, Commissioner Chesney, please do.
I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as Attachment A of this staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 21-0002, having made at least three of the following five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, 820, 15, parenthetically, D. And having made the required Spanish Springs area plan finding, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendment in WMPA 21-0002 as set forth in this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the Chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Excuse me, Commissioner, Chair, this is Julie Olander for the record. I would just like to add the language in there with the amended transportation language. So the, 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 the plan that was sent to you had the original transportation in that, that whole section that we had a discussion at the last meeting about. So that has been changed again. So what was sent out to you in your staff report and that resolution had the second rendition. Now we're in the third rendition, so we need to add the, just to, if he, Commissioner Chesney can just add the language saying with the amended transportation information, that would be helpful.
Julie, I'm sorry.
I can do that with the amended, with the amended transportation, amended, the motion with the amended transportation agreement.
Chair Chesney, if I may, for a second, I need a
Julie, Exhibit B, that is on the, on the Washoe County's website, is that the correct language included in Exhibit B?
If it's not in here, then we're not
We can't, we're back at the same place again.
Yes, where is it?
That's not right. Okay, just checking. So maybe you should pull up the screen then, if that's the language that you would like, and then we can incorporate.
Julie, if you let me know where it is, I can
I, Ms. Gustafson, Julie, I have a question. Julie, if I could ask for a clarification. Are you saying there's a change that's not in here?
Yeah, Julie Olander for the record, yes. So I had presented it in my planning, my PowerPoint at the beginning, at the end of it, so you'll see it and just, you'll recognize it.
But it's not in the packet.
It's not in the packet.
So therefore, the public didn't see it.
That's correct. So that's the reason I'm not advancing.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my motion. This is
Noted.
This is
This is, oops.
This is incomprehensible. You know, you, we postponed this so everybody could get their stuff together, and then we get down to hearing the proposals, and all of a sudden, let's add this and let's add that. My God, this, this just doesn't cut it. This is, this is really, really poor planning. I'm disgusted.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Phillips.
Pat Phillips. I'm concerned at how many things are still up in the air on this. And for us to move forward to, shall we say, verify what the information that we have, I can't support that.
I can't either.
If Secretary Lloyd or Ms. Gustafson, legally, can we try and postpone this again since we had something thrown in that we, we and the public were not aware of?
If I may kind of respond, I would like to respond to what Commissioner Chesney said. I appreciate the concern. I, certainly, we appreciate the fact that clearly, the Planning Commission wants to have everything available at the time when they're reading their packets. That is our desire, that's our intent. Unfortunately, the way the world works, we're not able to complete that in the timely manner because we have to organize meetings, we have to go back and forth with the applicant. Clearly, that, that was the situation in this, in this instance. There were a number of meetings that were, that were had between staff and the applicant. To, basically, to rectify the situation, the staff planner brought the updated language she presented in, in the application. It's actually fairly common. That happens all the time, whether it's conditions of approval that are changed at the last minute, or, or other, other items. In this case, it's a master plan amendment. So you have the purview to make these changes before you tonight. We, certainly, we don't like to bring you incomplete applications. We, ideally, the, the intent is to bring a complete application and have that to you within, you know, a week, 10 days prior to the meeting. Unfortunately, that didn't happen this time, and we do apologize for that.
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Commissioner Doncic.
If I may, if, so Ms. Olander did provide very fleetingly the changed motion on the screen, but once that, and maybe this is to Council Gustafson as well, is if there's a third iteration, can that be sent to, emailed to the Commission prior to the meeting?
And actually, that, I'm looking at Ms. Olander. I'm not sure if that was emailed. That certainly should have been emailed to the Commissioners.
Julie Olander for the record. Unfortunately, we really have been battling with this wording, and I know you are very frustrated. I am too. We had a real challenging situation to find the right wording, and I apologize if I went too fleetingly through it. I think the public trail comments got sort of maybe sidetracked us, but the reason we're back before you is not because of the trails, it's because of this language. And I apologize if I didn't read through it clearly enough. I tried to make reference to it, that this is the new language, and this was the language that was not in your staff report, and I, that did not come across clearly.
No, it did not, yeah.
So that's the reason I also had in my motion, and I don't know if we can bring that up again, I had that language in the motion that I presented in my PowerPoint, that we, and we needed to have an amendment because of that transportation improvement language. That is a different language that is in your staff report, and as Planning Manager Lloyd indicated, we don't like doing this. We don't like having to present things to you at the podium. I personally have do it, done it more times than I like, but you all have heard it more times than you like, too.
But Ms. Olander, when did you have this information?
This afternoon.
So it conceivably could have been emailed to us.
And I apologize. I have not done that in the past, and I should have done that to you. I didn't re-recognize that, you know, when things like this change at that last minute. And the wording that has changed, I don't have a side-by-side, but what was from there previously, it's not a huge significant change, and I, I, you know, I'm trying to go back. I just need to go, whoops, to where the proposed motion language is. And I should have highlighted this. Basically, what we changed from, it says easternly project boundary, to the intersection of Pyramid Highway, it now says Pyramid Right Away. And then at the end, it says timing of construction of said improvements, and then we added satisfaction of the county engineer. So I should have, I should have highlighted that again. I apologize for that. So there's two places. We added Pyramid Right Away, and we added Satisfaction of the County Engineer. So that's what's different than what is in your staff report.
So the applicant agrees to this?
Yes, that's the reason we had to work this language out to the, unfortunately, final, worked, finally worked it out today.
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Commissioners Villacheck.
Since my esteemed colleague, Commissioner Chesney withdrew his motion, I'm going to make an attempt to make another motion. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt, adopt the resolution contained as Attachment A of the staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in the Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 21-0002, having made at least three of the following findings in accordance with the Washoe County Planning Code Section 110, dot 820, dot 15, parenthetically, D. And having made all the required Spanish Springs area plans finding, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendment in WMPA 21-0002 as set forth in the staff report with the amendment of the language for transportation improvement and the removal of the public access, the trail, the equestrian or pedestrian trail inclusive to the property, as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the Chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Ms. Gustafson, do you have a?
I would just like to clarify that the motion with regards to the public trail easement, that you would like to approve the strikeouts that are included under the public trail easement, and you would like to deny the bold language, which is the additional language.
That is correct.
Okay, so the whole section will be removed?
Yes.
Thank you, just for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Nelson will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. We have a motion by Commissioners Villacheck, a second by Commissioner Nelson. Any other questions at this point? If not, can we take a roll call, please, on this one?
Larry Chesney?
No.
Francine Doncic?
Yes.
Sarah Sevillacheck?
Yes.
Michael Flick?
No.
Kate Nelson?
Yes.
Patricia Phillips? We have three yeses and three nos.
I believe that is not a majority, so this does not pass.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
You are welcome to call for a different motion if you choose.
Is, Commissioners, are there any other motions? I don't believe we have an option to continue it. No. Am I correct at that?
You could ask the applicant if they would be comfortable bringing it back through a continuance, but you would, it would require the applicant's consent to do so.
I'm going to like have Mark Siegel make that distinction.
Mark Siegel, SGS Commercial Real Estate. If you can, Trevor, if you can just clarify on that, would be appreciated.
The, the Planning Commission has the purview. They can continue it, they can take, make a motion to continue this to a future agenda item. However, due to statutorily required timeframes, you, as applicants, are required to, to consent to such a continuance.
And is there reason, is there, is there a detriment to my not consenting to a continuance?
Your motion failed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Siegel. Can you repeat that question?
Is there, is there a detriment to not continuing it? Because
Please keep in mind that what you're asking for is a, a master plan amendment. It will require a supermajority of the Planning Commission to support in order to, to have your project approved or the request approved. And so clearly, it's, it's up to you if you like to entertain the idea of a continuance.
Yes, we would like to continue and consent to a continuance. Thank you. And thank you for the Commission's consideration.
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Commissioners Villacheck.
Does this body, and this is to you, Mr. Lloyd, does this body have the opportunity to call a special meeting to deal with this issue singularly? So we can get a clean plan with, with the promise that no more changes without notification? So we can, this is the second continuance, and patience are running thin. So is there an opportunity to do that?
There, there is an opportunity. I'm looking at my legal staff, or legal, do we have the ability to just continue this time certain so we don't, aren't required to notice, or will, would we be required to notice?
You will be required to notice.
Required to notice, yes.
Okay. So, and, and that does require legal noticing through RGJ, so
10 days.
So it is 10 days, but they require a little, 14 days, right?
If I may, this is Lacy Kerfoot for the record. Our print company requires five-day lead time ahead of the 10-day noticing. So as long as I have documents approved, ready to go, I would need 15 days for noticing.
Right, so that takes us out of that two-week timeframe.
Yeah, so I'll just, okay. So essentially, it's the next scheduled meeting.
I mean, we could make it work, but it would, it would require a lot of moving parts.
And that's inefficient use of resources. So we do have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Fink.
Yes, Ms. Gustafson.
Well, I just, I just want to note that Well, I just want to note that under the Development Code, if a motion to adopt or deny the amendment results in a tie vote, which is what's happening here, and the applicant elects not to continue the matter, then each person on the commission is required to discuss what findings they could or could not make. Obviously, if this is, if the applicant agrees to continue this, and it's continued, then it's continued.
We do have a motion on the floor for continuance.
We have a motion by Commissioner Flick for a continuance. Is there a second?
Commissioner Travilcek seconds.
Any other discussion? Your motion is to do a continuance, which was agreed upon by the applicant. Okay? So can we get a roll call, please?
Larry Chesney?
Yes.
Francine Doncheck?
Yes.
Sarah Savilcek?
Yes.
Michael Flick?
Yes.
Kate Nelson?
Yes.
Patricia Phillips?
We have a unanimous motion to continue to the next meeting. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, our next item on the agenda is Item 8B, abandonment case number WAB 21-0005. Andrews Ganyo, I apologize if I did not pronounce that correctly. Secretary Lloyd, if you would, please.
Chief Madam Chair, this item before you is for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve the abandonment of 33-foot wide access and public utility easements along the north, south, and western property lines of parcel 142, 241, 38, 1142, 241, 43. The abandonment of a 33-foot wide access and public utility easement along the eastern property line of parcel 142, 241, 43, and the abandonment of 13 feet of a 33-foot wide access and public utility easement along the eastern property line of parcel 142, 241, 38. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Staff Planner Dan Kalan.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, before we go any further, I would need to ask, is there any disclosures by the commissioners? Either ethics or ex parte? Hearing none, thank you. Dan, thank you very much.
All right. Dan Kalan, Washoe County Planner, for the record. I have before you today WAB 20-0005. Next slide. There we go. Trevor succinctly put this into place. What is easier to do is, next slide. Explain what is going on on the map. There we go. All right, so all of the red areas are the areas that the applicants are requesting to abandon. They have a 33-foot government patent easement around them. They want to leave the 20-foot access easement along the eastern side of the northern parcel in place in order to maintain access to the southern parcel. As you can see here, this is located in the southwest Chucky Meadows. And it affects APNs 142, 241, 27, 37, 39, 42, and 44. These parcels can be accessed via Raider Run Road, General Way, and Cassarus Way. So none of these affected parcels would become landlocked by the proposed abandonments. On this slide, we outline the requested abandonments and the various constraints of the site. So the light blue circles that are crossing the red on the lower, I'm sorry, the southwestern corner and the eastern side of the southern parcel represent critical stream zones. These are obviously not areas that are desirable for future roadways. Therefore, staff has no issues with abandoning those access easements as they are not going to perpetuate any future access. Likewise, the easements on the north of APN 142, 241, 42, and 38, both of those are not needed as there's already access along the eastern side. Likewise, on the western side of both of these affected parcels, there's no need as there is maintained access to all parcels that are affected. However, there has been some discussion because Washoe County Engineering that it would like to maintain at least a 30-foot easement along the northern parcel of the proposed application. This is specifically to maintain public purpose, to accommodate space for a future roadway, as well as to share the burden of that future roadway with the parcel 142, 241, 27, which is north of the affected parcels that are in this application. Which is to effectuate this roadway section here, which accounts for a right-of-way of up to 60 feet. Notice was sent to the 10 affected property owners adjacent to the parcels. And staff is able to make all three of the required findings, as well as a fourth under NRS. And therefore recommends that the Planning Commission partially approve the abandonment. And I have provided a possible motion for your convenience. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan at this time?
Chair Doncheck.
Commissioners Vilcek.
Thank you. So if you could provide some clarification when you say we, normally we have approval with conditions, denial, et cetera. What do you mean by partial approval?
So going back to this slide that I've brought up for the partial approval, Washoe County Engineering is evaluating the request, which is for a full 33-foot abandonment of that northern easement along the northern parcel. They would like to maintain 30 feet of that, as opposed to give up all 33 feet of it. So it would be to approve a 3-foot abandonment, as opposed to a 33-foot abandonment. Therefore, a partial approval with conditions as outlined.
Commissioner Flick?
Yes. Just have a question on what, on the high-density rural, how many units is that per acre?
That is one unit per 2.5 acres.
One unit to 3.5?
2.5. I apologize for the mask.
That's all I've got.
Any other questions from the commissioners at this time? Is there anything, a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening. Derek Wilson on behalf of the property owners. And I have a presentation, which I believe is going to be queued up here in a second. So Dan has done a good job of explaining this. I realize there's a lot of technical issues, but I'm hoping I can clarify some of that. I'll do my best to not repeat what he's saying. At the same time, I'd like to give a brief overview of these properties and some of the background of how abandonments have been handled in this area. There we go. So those are the two parcels. You can see lots of small, almost informal roads serving all the parcels in this area. This is a, these parcels sit in the middle of a roughly 200-acre area of these 2.5-acre parcels. They all have the same zoning. It's a very consistent neighborhood. These are legal conforming parcels. Everything in the area has the same zoning, HDR, and a little bit of GR that accounts for some of the stream channels. I heard it click, but nothing happened. There we go. So the purpose is to prevent any new road construction, primarily because those roads are not needed. All the parcels right now have road access, they have driveways. There's the potential to add a lot of roads in there. A member of the public could show up with a tractor and start grading if they really were motivated. So the motivation on the part of the property owners in this case, and previous ones that I've worked with, and that, in fact, we've discussed here, is to prevent unregulated access. I think there's been some off-road vehicle activity, kids on quads and stuff, bombing around corners of properties. And I personally do not find that acceptable with quiet suburban rural living. So the owners, these parcels were built, the two parcels I'm dealing with tonight, they were built with single-family houses years ago. There's no immediate development plans to add to anything. Yes, an abandonment slightly increases our development potential, but in practice, these parcels are built, and the owners don't have plans to expand. So that's an aerial of the request. That the green section is, or easements that would remain. So the vertical green stripe, that's a driveway that serves the Ganyo property. And that's one of the property owners, so that's the only purpose of keeping that. And then the green stripe across the top, that is an easement that would relate to Raider Run Road, a road that does pass through the neighborhood. As Dan explained, when we initially made this request, we requested that entire 33-foot easement across the top of that image be abandoned. The county came back and said, "We need minimum 20 feet there." And I had to reluctantly agree, because that is consistent with practice in the area and with other abandonments. The reason we asked in this case for the entire thing to be abandoned is because Raider Run Road, in fact, sits entirely on the other person's property. Again, we had to reluctantly agree that that could change in the future. And yes, neighbors need to share these easement burdens. So we would agree to a 20-foot easement across the top there. Again, granting this request wouldn't change any development intensity. The uses are already there, it's single-family housing, it's going to stay that way. The abandonment we're requesting is consistent with AB 1604 that we dealt with here a few years ago, and then AB 2104 that we dealt with fairly recently, just a few months ago. Did I skip one? Yeah. So this, if you cared to follow the green lines and the blue lines, the blue lines show driveways. Every parcel has a driveway. I think we've established that no access would be lost with this request. There are, there would be no parcels that are left inaccessible. So as you've probably gathered by now, we did have a, we have a broad agreement that many of these easements are redundant. We had a difference of opinion about how to handle the Raider Run Road easement. And this, I believe, came from county engineering. And we certainly respect that the county has road standards. We just feel in this case, these are extremely lofty standards that don't really apply to this area. And I think that when the county's requesting a 30-foot easement to remain across the north of this property, that equates to a 60-foot right-of-way, because there's 30 feet on each parcel. So what we're requesting is the image on the left, which would be a 20-foot easement retained along Raider Run Road, and then the Ganyo driveway, and then the other, and then all the remaining easements would be abandoned. The county's proposed abandonment is for 30 feet along the top. So that's the only difference that we're pushing. And I'm going to make the case that 30 feet is excessive and unneeded for this area. I'm not sure where, oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. There we go. So 60-foot easements are not needed, in my opinion. The green oval there outlines where Raider Run goes after it passes these subject properties. And it only serves those four additional parcels. So a 60-foot road, a 60-foot right-of-way through there would be, or 60-foot roadway would be highly out of character with the area. And I believe that neighborhood character is a fundamental issue. And I've spent many times here, we've discussed neighborhood character. And I just don't see this neighborhood ever building multi-lane roads serving rural zoning residential parcels. Most of the roads in the neighborhood are roughly 15 feet of travel width. These are dirt roads, two-lane dirt roads, and then usually a ditch on one side. So again, a 60-foot right-of-way here is a very lofty standard. These are also not county roads. Previous abandonments in this area, the county has told me these, I think I labeled a map once, "county roadway", and they came back and said, "No, no, these are not county roads." So the county is not actively working in here and maintaining these roads. In fact, I haven't seen any plans to build any additional roads in here. So these parcels are a little bit south of Arrow Creek Parkway. Arrow Creek would be an arterial street that serves this area. I measured, this is from the county map. Arrow Creek plus shoulders, plus gutters, is only 45 feet. That black line is an image of what a 60-foot roadway would look like through there. I just don't see a 60-foot roadway ever being built through a neighborhood like this. It doesn't connect to other arterials. It doesn't serve a purpose. I just don't see that much paving ever being needed. The subject parcels are roughly in the middle of this image. So our request, our preferred resolution, would be to, well, I may have mistaken here, but A is, option A is, approve request as submitted. At the time I wrote that, I forgot that we had already amended it. Our original request was for full abandonment at the north property line. What I meant to say was approve with a 20-foot easement along the north property line. That would be consistent with other abandonments in the area, and consistent with the area. Barring that, we would like to walk out of here with an approval. If we find that you, that you, that there is no support for option A, we would then agree to approving it as Dan explained, approving it as the staff report states. If there is an appetite for option A, that's a technical change to the conditions of approval. I'm sure Trevor can figure that out, but I also have it written up. It would be modifying condition 2D to say 20 feet instead of 30 feet. It's a fairly simple change. So that's essentially my presentation. As an overall summary, easements are not needed. Access patterns are not changed. It doesn't affect how the neighborhood operates. So that's my presentation. I'd be happy to elaborate if any clarifications needed.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Chair Doncheck.
Chair Savilcek.
So this is for the applicant or county staff. I believe you said these are not county-maintained roads, so these are private roads?
Yes, that's what I've been told in the past.
So the county is asking for a 60-foot right-of-way on private roads?
Dan Kalan, for the record. These are government patent easements. They were given to the government when they were patented and given to the property owners. So the county already owns a 33-foot wide easement around these parcels already. This is a request to abandon our acquit claim to these easements. At this point, Washoe County Engineering agrees to quit their claim for the access portion of these easements, as opposed to necessarily the drainage portion, which is in the conditions of approval for all these easements. But only on this northern parcel, and the northern part of this parcel, they would like to keep the 30-foot of that easement.
But there's a diagram here that says, it says 30-foot of the easement, but it also says 60-foot proposed future right-of-way.
Yes, because it would be on the opposite side. So it's 33 feet on one side of the parcel, and the parcel north of that also has a 33-foot easement.
So these are government-patented roads?
Patent easements.
Patent easements, but not at 60 feet?
Not at 60 feet. They were technically, from end to end, at 66 feet.
And we've had others of this before us, several abandonment requests.
Believe...
Because of government...
Dwayne, come up here and discuss this. He is...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've been sitting in the audience all evening, and beg your indulgence, Dwayne Smith, for the record, I'm the county engineer, director of engineering. So I just want to be clear on a couple of things. The government lots include patent easements around all the perimeters. Those easements were provided for the benefit of the public in the event that there needed to be either roadways constructed, drainages constructed, or utilities constructed. These are entitlements and obligations that were included with these parcels. When people buy these properties, they buy these properties with that in their... When people buy these properties, they buy these properties with that understanding. This is visioning. This is insight. This is looking into the future. We don't know what the development patterns in the area are going to look like. We don't know what's going to be done in the future. We're also sensitive to the fact that these areas are likely not going to develop into some type of high-density intensive use. In this process, we've been asked to review many abandonments of easements, and I think you can see, if, if that diagram could be brought back up, we 100% agree with the east and the west and the south boundary portions. What we're concerned about is at some point in the future that the property owners in the area, because this does occur, we have other areas in Washoe County where property owners have grown tired of not having paved roadways and drainage ditches that convey successfully storm and floodwaters, and they want utilities and they want these, these amenities. Our only consideration and concern here is to preserve the right that if this did occur in the future, that there would be some amount of area on both sides of the property lines. Both property owners would be in the same boat as in terms of that, of that easement that could be utilized for the future. In most of the areas, the abandonment's recognizing the rural character, and I understand exactly what the applicant's representative is saying, and I agree with that. And we've looked at this and said, 20 feet is generally the rule of thumb. I think that this is a perfect example where you, as a planning commission, have the ability to make a decision. I would support your decision of maintaining a 20-foot or a 30-foot access easement along the top. But I just want to be clear that it's not, Washoe County Engineering is not arbitrarily trying to restrict the ability of the property owner. That restriction already exists. What we're trying to do is have vision and foresight to see what could be allowed into the future so that if the property owners in the, choose to do something different, excuse me? Was there a comment?
I think that's someone on Zoom with an open mic.
Okay. So that if somebody in the future chose to do something, that that path would be clear for that. This is not the intent to restrict property use. It's not the intent to restrict the owners of these lots that bought these lots or acquired these lots with these encumbrances to not be able to be flexible and remove some of those encumbrances. So I support a 20-foot easement, support a 30-foot easement. I like consistency. I really do. So, you know, as the county engineer, I would certainly support amending the application for a 20-foot access, excuse me, 20-foot easement to remain in place along the north property that balances with the property owner to the north and is in, and is consistent with the other abandonments that have been done in the area.
Thank you very much.
I'm available to answer any other questions that you might have.
I'm much more comfortable with your explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question from the commissioners? Seeing no question, is there any public comment at this time?
I do not have any public comment via Zoom.
All right. If there's no public, I will close public hearing and bringing it back to the commissioners for further discussion or a motion.
Chair Doncheck.
Oh, yes.
Hi, Commissioner Nelson. I don't think I can support a 30-foot right-of-way easement, but I can definitely get behind the 20-foot right-of-way easement. Just, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Chesney. I agree with Commissioner Nelson. So I'm prepared to make a motion, but do I need to specify in the motion that we're going to recommend a 20-foot easement?
Secretary Lloyd?
It would be in the conditions of approval.
Commissioner Chesney is ready to make a motion.
Okay.
But he wishes to do it with a 20-foot, and he wants to make sure he uses the proper language. Go ahead.
I think, okay.
Come on, Sarah, what?
I think you're asking for clarification from Mr. Lloyd to amend the conditions of approval. Washoe County Engineering and Capital Projects, Section 2D, to strike 30-foot and amend it to 20-foot.
That would be what I would, would need clarification on because that is not part of the motion that I have. So if you have something, Sarah, go ahead and make the motion, please.
Go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, all right. Chair Doncheck. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Commissioner Sevillecheck, please.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission partially approve abandonment case number W A B 21-0005 for Lauren and Jonathan Andrews and Patricia Gagne as conditioned in Exhibit A with an amendment to the conditions of approval under Washoe County Engineering and Capital Projects, 2D to strike 30 feet wide access easement and replace it with a 20-foot wide access easement. And having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110.806.20, and a fourth finding in accordance with the Nevada revised statute 278.480 (for).
Is there a second?
Second.
Chesney, check it.
I think Commissioner Phillips beat you on this one, Mr. Chesney. Is there another?
That's fine.
Further discussion before the vote? We are approving, we are amending staff's recommendation. We're approving everything, but we're amending the one specification for 30-foot north end to a 20-foot.
All right, but we still have the side easement.
Everything else is the same.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion to approve in a second. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye. Nay, whatever it is.
So we have five in approval. We have Commissioner Flick oppose. The motion passes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. At this point, I'm going to close the pub, public hearing. Continuing on, we're on to nine, item 9A, chair and commission items. Commissioners, do you have any, under A, do you have any future agenda items that you would like to bring up at this time?
Commissioner, Chair Doncheck.
Commissioner Sevillecheck.
Yeah, for future agenda items is an update on Washoe County's master plan update.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sevillecheck. Anyone else?
Yeah, through the chair. Commissioner Chesney, I would like an update on the area plans because I believe that the area plans are supportive of the master plan, and I don't like the thought of seeing a master plan being developed until the area plans are there to support it.
We can wrap that all into one. You bet.
Trevor said you could put that all into one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other future agenda items, commissioners? Not, we'll move on to item B, request for information from staff. Is there any requests, commissioners?
Commissioner Chesney, I have, I have a comment. And I'm not, I'm not going to direct this at anybody in particular, but I've noticed in the last year that we have seen on many occasions these last-minute gotchas on motions, on proposals that haven't gone to the public or haven't been seen by the planning commission until the day of the meeting. And I have, I'm probably the strongest proponent of staff and the work that they do. In the seven years that I've been on this commission, I applaud them dramatically all the time on their hard work. But the wheels are starting to fall off the train, and I'm very disappointed in several instances in the last year, and you blame it on COVID, you can blame it on whatever you want, I don't want to blame it on anything. I'm saying that there's a lack of review of these presentations and trying to squeak this stuff in at the last minute, hitting going to cut it. And I want that on the record. Thank you. I'm through.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Any other requests from staff or comments? Seeing none, I'll move on to item 10, directors and legal councils items. Secretary Lloyd, is there anything to report on previous planning commission items?
I have a couple of items to report on. The county commission adopted a couple of code amendments. The first is having to do with the parcel map review committee. Came before here. That was adopted by the planning, the county commission. Also, the item on continuum of care was also adopted by the county commission, and those are now in effect. That's all I have.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Ms. Gustafson, any legal information and updates at this time?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, we move back once more to public comment. Or is there any public comment at this time?
I do not have any public comment via Zoom.
I have no public comment in chambers.
Thank you very much. Seeing no public comment, I adjourn a motion for adjournment.
Chesney, move to adjourn.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.